For your viewing pleasure, this broadcast of the Municipal Council Meeting of Alpena is made possible by the funding provided by the City of Alpena. Thank you for your generosity.
Good evening, welcome to the Alpena City Council Meeting, August 21st, 2017. Call the auditorium.
Johnson?
Here.
Nielsen?
Here.
Noah?
Here.
Sexton?
Here.
Walagora?
Here.
Let's rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any modifications to the agenda this evening? Approval of the minutes, regular session of August 7th, 2017, and closed session of August 7th, 2017. Citizens, here in four council on agenda and non-agenda items are allowed five minutes each to address your concerns. This is the only time during a council meeting you're allowed to address the council with one exception this evening. I'm going to hold public comment regarding Second Avenue until we hit that on the agenda, just so we don't lose your comments in the rest of our discussion leading up to that. So after Rich gives his presentation on the matter, then I'll reopen public comment just for that. So unless, if anyone else has any other item to discuss, please come to the podium and state your name and address for our records.
I've got a five-minute comment.
Oh, please come up, sir.
My name is Brian Acton. I live at 380 Long Harbor Road in Alpena. First of all, I'd like to thank the council for listening today and appreciate the great job you guys do keeping Alpena on the straight and narrow. Also like to say hello to Karen. Finally get to put a face to the name. Twice a year I get these. I mean, thank you very much.
Very popular.
I'll be brief. I'm asking the council to consider waiving the 3.5% late charge on my homeowner's tax or property tax. A little bit of background, I typically always come in here in July, I pay the amount in full. This year I was traveling and I just forgot. Some background, I'm not homesteaded, so this is a substantial tax bill, okay? We live five years, my family and I live five years, five months here in Alpena, balance of years in Florida. I've raised five kids, they've all gone to school in Florida. I've been there for 25 years. I'm lucky enough, I can run my business either in Florida or when I'm here in Alpena. We've been here for about eight years, we love living here, like to consider ourselves model citizens. We give to charities in town, Sunrise Mission, Boys and Girls Club, Bestur Museum, we give openly to all of those people. We spent a lot of time and money this year putting a boat together, putting in the cardboard boat race, for example. We raced in a kayak race this on July 3rd. We've become real close members of Alpena. My tax bill is one of the highest in the city, in the town of Alpena. Karen, you were good enough to send me this nice note. My full amount due was $10,538, summer tax bill. Annually, I pay about $12,000 a year. So I'm paying roughly $1,000 a month to live in Alpena. I don't mind paying taxes. You guys do a great job. I love the town, I love the security, I love everything about it. I think the policy of charging 3% penalty is wrong. I own homes all over Canada and the United States. Typically about 1% per month is penalty. There's no, I've never run into a 3% or a lump sum penalty for missing the tax date by one or two days. In this case, I miss it by two weeks. Again, none of my kids have gone to school here in Alpena. I've never had to, I've been fortunate, I haven't had to use dial ride, never been in ACC, and so on and so forth. The penalty, I was ready to pay it full last week with the 3.5%.
As to what the proper procedure is for your request.
Thanks for all your good work.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? The consent agenda this evening is, A, bills to be allowed in the amount of $701,315.59.
Have we approved that consent agenda?
Second. Nielsen?
Yes.
Noah?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes.
Walagora?
Hi.
Johnson?
Yes.
No presentations, announcements, proclamations, or public hearings, so we're down to report of officers. We have one property appraisal for insurance purposes.
At the last council meeting, I asked council if I could have the authorization to go out for bids for property and personal liability. And then Rich and I and Greg got together to decide what we were going to put in the bid of the property and saw a lot of it was quite old, the values on them. So I went back and looked and we had done three of them, well, yeah, three, 85, 92, and 2002. Some of them were just for water systems, et cetera. But then in 2005, we had a complete appraisal done by Duff and Phelps, and they're our appraisal company that we work with on fixed assets. Anyway, you should get one done every seven to 10 years. It used to be every 10, but they're looking at every seven now. So we thought we'd back up from the bid if council agrees with that and go out for an appraisal first, get everything up to date. We've made a lot of changes, a lot of improvements on a lot of our buildings. The cost, I would probably go out for a sealed bid, probably, it's coming in about $18,000 to $20,000. However, if we go through everything again, and like the pump stations or the lift stations, we don't have to have them do every one of them, we'll do one for all of them. So we might be able to get that cost down a little bit. And then Greg suggested, since we don't have in the budget this year, put it in next year's budget and have it done, take a couple months to get it done in 17, 18. Is that the right year?
Yes.
Yes.
And then go out for the bid on the insurance. So we would need to renew one more year with Alpena Agency.
Do you want to have any questions here? Are you going to, do you need that in two actions? One to renew the, one to renew with Alpena Agency and one to put this out for bid or just, what will be taking action on that?
I will, if you approve it, I will notify Steve Wilson that we're going to go one more year on our insurance with them. And I also would need just approval to go out for...
I'm doing this two separate motions.
You want two separate motions, okay.
I think so. It makes a hitch.
Yeah, and second... And the second one is to go out for RFPs on the appraisal. That'd be City Hall, Water Sewer, Public Safety, all the buildings.
Pardon?
Yep.
I move we renew our insurance coverage with Alpena Agency for a period of 12, 1-2017 to 11-30-2018.
Second.
Who won that one?
Sean.
Noah?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes.
Walagora? Johnson?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
And I move we approve the going out for bids on the appraisals of properties as stated.
Second. Sexton?
Yes.
Walagora? Johnson?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Noah?
Yes.
All right, thank you Karen.
Thank you. Just to let you know, we'll probably not go out for those until May or so of next year. Get them back so that they could then begin immediately after the 1st of July. Hopefully get them done within a couple of months.
All right, finished business downtown Second Avenue, on-street parking between Chisholm and River.
Well, as opposed to reading the memo again, I think we know how we got here and where we end. But since the last council meeting, we did close off the street and did a mock-up of the parking stalls, our vehicles in there where we could, and then had probably one of the largest city vehicles that we've got with the one-way plow on the front, which they typically don't use, but that was a good worst-case example. Parked that there along with vehicles in the opposing lane to provide a demonstration of how much room was left for maneuvering in that scenario. Just so that council is aware, proposed B at the top of the screen is what was authorized previously by city council. The bottom portion is the two-way street system with parking on both sides if there is, if there is interest in pursuing that. Just so that we've got them both up there, we can see. Obviously, there's an increase in the number of parking spaces that will be available along there. And originally, one of the concerns I had was the 11-foot lanes, but I think we dispelled that a little bit when we were out there on the streets. Any questions from council?
Yeah, don't go too far, I guess. Before we get too far, I'm going to, I'll just have you step back in the event that someone would like to public comment on the topic. This would ordinarily be the only time during this topic that would be addressed council unless we have a specific question later for you.
Good evening, council mayor. Craig Patterson, I represent 13 tenants and two buildings, nine of which are retail. I want to congratulate the creativity of staff and you, mayor, for your leadership bringing us together. We've had several meetings, as you know, and to us in the downtown, density drives business. I work in development in two states, in Michigan, from Detroit to Grand Rapids to Sioux to Menominee, and all I hear about is parking in the DDAs and how important it is. Going from 6 to 15 is huge. It's huge in terms of the potential it gives our tenants and our shareholders downtown. Cindy, I appreciate the demonstration, the recommendation, because I think whenever you narrow lanes, there's always a question. One city I work in, probably seen us in the headlines, Traverse City. All they do is talk about how can we put in more parking to service front and stay there one way, and they still need to put in more parking. It's all about differentiation. I've seen our communities that compete against our tenants down in our Second Avenue corridor. I hope that tonight the vote will be for more parking on Second, and it seems to serve both purposes, two-way and density. Thank you.
Thank you, Rick.
Evening, members of the council, city officials. My name is Rick Rafferty and I live at 129 North Franklin Street in the City of Alpena. I've lived and worked in the Alpena area for about seven years and vacationed here 10 years prior to that. I've really enjoyed the city and all it has to offer, I raised family here, I continue to raise family here. Recently, obviously the issue of the two-way street becoming one-way is a large issue. People talk about it, water cooler and everything else. And I just have a couple questions, I guess I'm going to ask the city after I make a couple statements. People are fairly happy with the way it flows now. There's not seemed to have been many incidents, many complaints with the way it has turned out. The ones that have been converted to two lanes have worked and people have adjusted to those. But this one being the main one that goes downtown has a lot of people concerned. The parking demonstration, you put a sizable truck there and had a car, but you weren't dealing with normal traffic on Monday through Friday downtown. You didn't have multiple people getting in and out of cars, particularly seen as citizens maybe, and there was not a lot of people crossing the street in front of the traffic that might improve or increase down those streets. So I went out and I talked to a lot of the business owners along that area that would be affected, and none of them are for this. They all have the feeling that if it isn't broke, then don't fix it. Talked to private citizens and a lot of the questions people have is why? Why now? What is the big deal that has to be changed? Is it causing so many problems that it needs to be changed? Are you getting many complaints that it has to be changed? Or is there another reason? The people don't feel like it's clear to them why they're, why they're big pushed for this right now. I spoke with Wayne Gunderman. He's the one who wrote in to the Alpena News in August 2nd editorial regarding the parking and the downtown changing one way to a two-way. And I just wanted to ask him why he felt compelled to write in and what he would know about that. And Mr. Gunderman was with the Michigan Department of Transportation as a safety and traffic engineer for over 30 years here in this area. So he does have some understanding of traffic and, you know, things that can back that up, obviously. So the question I asked the council is, why now is it being pushed? I mean, I know it's been talked about for a while, but why all of a sudden this year has it been like on the front burner? And my other question would be that it seems that the public does not really want this to take place, and a lot of people feel their voices aren't being heard, and that's concerning. So that would be the questions I would pose. I would ask that you would not approve this until a later date, table it until more information be made available to the public to have it garner more citizen support. Because as it is right now, I've not met anybody from the citizens or the business owners who are really for this. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Rick.
Who are you again? Joanna Cooper, 104 on our second. First of all, hello again. I guess what I wanted to say is, I am, you know, I agree with everything that Craig said. Again, I've had lots of conversations over the last year. Here we are, a year later. And I appreciate the city going to the trouble of, you know, creating the demonstration. I also agree with the last person who spoke about the fact that my concern with that demonstration was that it wasn't real life. We didn't have cars moving, which is what I thought was going to happen. Thought we would have had like traffic actually flowing through, people trying to get in and out of their cars as traffic is going by. That's my concern, is people getting out. Obviously, as a business owner downtown, I'm thrilled, beyond thrilled, to have extra parking. But I still have my concerns with safety because above anything else for my customers and for the people of downtown, that's a very big concern of mine. I do have a question too, and this will probably be for Rich. I am wondering how we're going to be able to have parking on both sides with, that extra parking spots with two lanes, but we couldn't have those extra parking spots the way it is right now? Because I had asked to have a parking spot in front of my store a while ago, which was I think number, or where it says 20, I think? That's 20 right there. On the, I bet it'd be on the eastern side, there is a parking spot there now. So that was just one of my concerns, that all of a sudden now there is able to be parking in these additional spots with another lane of traffic. So obviously, I still 100% believe that it's best the way that it is and adding additional parking spots that are on this new proposal. If that is out of the question and council is going to proceed forward, then I would be willing to compromise with this other proposal. But I just want to make it clear that my stance on it is that I still believe that the way that it is right now currently with a few additional parking spots still serves, I believe, the downtown.
Thank you, Joanna.
Hi there, my name is Ron Stevens. I live at 210 Wilson Street. I've been a resident here for most of my life. Some of you don't meet. I've delivered laundry, I've delivered personal laundry to different people in town. I've delivered for 22 years, all through this town. And it seems to be working really good right now. So I don't see fixing something that isn't broken. And it seems like the traffic moves real well. And I drive through there every day, I go to the senior center and I come right downtown and the traffic looks as smooth as it's, as smooth as it always has. So I'd like to recommend or suggest that we keep the way it is. This seems to work real well. And that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. So it's been a few months since I've spoken at this podium, so thanks for having me again. So I just want to reiterate that this plan was created and then proposed to the DDA Board to take into consideration some of the concerns with plan, the proposed B plan that was approved, which was a lack of parking, a loss of parking, and also the safety of diners, especially on the center building part of the street. So when this came to the DDA Board, we approved it unanimously, saying this is, yes, it is a compromise for those that don't want two-way traffic, but it does address the two biggest issues that we noticed with the proposed plan that will go into effect as it is now. And whenever you show up to the business owners and downtown property owners on that stretch, not one of them said they agree with proposed B. Everyone said if it's two-way traffic, the one that you're voting on tonight is the one that they, they want. Not one person said they would prefer the parking on one side of the street. So I just hope that you consider that input, especially from the business and the property owners, and consider this new plan over the one that's currently going to be in effect this fall. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. All set? Excuse me. Just a quick, just a quick reiteration that council is probably aware of, just want to make sure that our guests are aware as well, that, that we're not going to take action this evening on whether we should have this one way or two-way. That action was taken quite some time ago, and I guess to answer any of your questions as far as what our comments or discussion were at that time and the presentations that we had, I would invite you and encourage you to watch the YouTube videos where you can go over that. I don't, unless someone has an issue with that, I really don't want to, I guess, take up a lot of time in re-discussing that this evening, only because that's not on the agenda, so we can't take an action on something that's not on the agenda. Tonight's agenda basically states that we will take action on either staying with proposal B as we agreed before or switching to the new proposal of parking on both sides. Just, just so that's clear and you don't wonder why we're not answering to some of your statements. Other than that, I guess I'll just open it up to maybe whoever would like to go first because I usually steal people's thunder, so I'll just wait if you'd like.
You know what I think.
I try not to. Except if you want to go down the...
Down the line or from up the line, it's fine.
Sean?
I can start, we tend to have you start, I guess. We do have three options, okay? And the first is proposed B. I haven't heard anybody support that. And again, if that's a compromise, I'm not even going to give it any airtime. The second proposal is the bottom one, is the two-way with the parking. And as much as I do appreciate that that is a compromise, you know, that the businesses will at least get some benefit out of that, what I do want people to consider, the sidewalk on each side of that is at the bare minimum. On that bare minimum sidewalk, we share bicycles, dogs, pedestrians, beer drinkers, wine drinkers, kids with ice cream. You go into the parking lane, that is the state bare minimum. Two lanes of traffic, state bare minimum, the next parking lane, state bare minimum. None of those variances are recommended, okay? They're the minimal. So we have sidewalks, two rows of parking, two lanes of traffic, all at the bare minimum, that gives you zero chance for error. You are not opening a car door, okay, on that road. That's certainly the case in some big cities, I understand that, but there is not a safe way to open a car door while traffic's coming, so it's going to be a challenge. I'm also a little concerned that the spots that are toward Chisholm are going to back up. When you go to parallel park, everybody behind you has to stop, obviously. Where you're coming in those first couple spots, if you stop, three or four cars behind you stop, that traffic's going to go out onto Chisholm. So I appreciate the compromise aspect of it. I do think it's going to be a safety concern. I've heard several comments, our city engineer himself said, well, people will just avoid the downtown. Well, if that's the reality, then why are we doing this in the first place? You know, lesser argument, and I know a lot of us appreciate the ambiance downtown. This is just going to make it more crowded, less of a cool place to hang out, less of a hit place to hang out. But I don't think that, that idea has a lot of support. Our third option is to rescind our vote and make this a one-way street again. Rescinding is always an option, you're allowed to do that. And I would ask the mayor, Councilwoman Nielsen, Councilman Noah to do that. We are supporting an idea that this community does not want. The business owners do not want it, the people who live there do not want it, the senior citizens in this community do not want it. In fact, I haven't talked to anyone, okay, who supports this going to two-way. Whether it's a good idea or a bad idea, to me, I don't care at that point. The point to me is that this is not what the people who elect us to represent them want. I think a gentleman said earlier, then why are we doing it? And I'll give you the answer, we're doing it for about 20 people. Okay, and I don't think the desires of 20 people, 100 people, 500 people outweigh what 10,000 people in this community want. You know, I started out for two-way, thought it was a great idea, so I learned more about it until every single business owner down there said, we don't want it. So again, we're pushing a compromise, which is great, but we're compromising what very, very few people want versus what the majority of this community want. But the people that are affected by it don't want it, then our responsibility is to represent the people who put us here and do what the people who elected us told us to do and make their voice heard. So I would certainly still support rescinding the vote, keeping it one-way.
I am concerned about safety. I am. I was down, went down to the demonstration. I believed I was representing the people who elected me when we voted to have two-way streets. After seeing the demonstration and walking around downtown, I agree with almost everything Sean said. I don't see how increased parking and two-way streets will make anything better. I don't, I shudder to think about kids on bikes being thrown in the mix. I just can't, I just don't like to think about it. But that's going to happen, they're not going to stay on the sidewalk. I hope that we can revisit the plan to have two-way street, have a two-way street in that section of our town. I would like to revisit that. It is not against anybody's policy or it's not against the law to revisit that. I hope we can do that since we've decided that extra parking is the premium now and that golden apple that we reach for. Fine, if we want extra parking, we, in my opinion, we need to choose, will we have two-way streets or will we have extra parking? I feel that we all are waiting for that first accident, for somebody to say, we shouldn't have done that probably. And why wait for the first one? I, I regret that we changed to two-way streets now that we have decided to add extra parking. Something has to go. The parking or the two-way streets? I can't see it being safe any other way.
A lot of times what I've learned doing this for the few years I have, that you get strongly approached by people that feel you're one way or another on any issue. For instance, Sean said he doesn't feel that any of the 10,000 people that we represent are in favor of this change to a two-way street. And I would argue that point because it seems when you get away from the downtown and you ask people out in the community, you know, about two-way streets, one of the most common things is, it would be nice to see a council have the courage to actually change to a two-way street and give...
to a two-way street and get rid of the one-way streets. They were put in here at one time to help alleviate traffic through the downtown when the businesses were let out on North Side. That's, you know, I remember when it was changed, and I remember it was a controversy then. So, what I've been hearing from the majority of the people, kind of followed a poll that was in the paper several months ago, and it was three to two. It was a very close issue, but it was still, the majority of the people who have contacted me said they were in favor of converting this back to a two-way street system for, for the good of the community and to grow, not to a one-city block, but to continue to grow the city of Alpena as a whole, better traffic flow, flow to, to help that, so, you know. So, I'm very comfortable after seeing the demonstration and actually driving a very similar situation in the Pittsburgh area, on narrow streets. I did have a tendency to slow down when I was in those, and it was safe, and people were getting out of their cars, and where we were traveling, there was a ton of people walking and biking and everything else. And it was a very narrow street system. After seeing the demonstration, I will be honest, at first, when I walked the streets, and I walk Second Avenue every, every afternoon, because I work on Second Avenue, I did not think that there was going to be any way to make it work, just seeing it without it being laid out. Once I saw it laid out and I saw the gap between the cars and the plow truck, I was comfortable. I've driven it, and so I'm comfortable in my original vote, and I'm comfortable with the additional parking.
I happen to agree with Sean and Susan. I voted against two-way for many reasons, and I stated them, I'm not going to rehash them. But at this point, if Councilwoman Nielsen is open to putting it back on the agenda, should we, I don't know if you are or not, but from, because I can't, because I voted no, and Sean can't, because he voted no. But one of you three could put it back on the agenda, and we can revisit two-way.
I would be willing to do that. I think we, we need to make a decision, a firm decision, and stick with it. And after we've seen clearly what it's like, that decision could come, should come fairly soon. People have been mishmashed and jerked around long enough. We need to make a decision, stick to it for what that's worth, and move forward.
So, that being said, if Councilwoman Nielsen decides to put it back on the agenda, we can revisit one-way versus two-way. If that doesn't happen, this is a difficult vote for me, because I didn't vote for the two-way conversion, because I just, I don't think it's good for that section of downtown. And the other side is never going to change, so you're making, in my opinion, a bigger mess than what some people say that we have, which I don't think we do. But I understand that the business owners want the extra parking, and I'm, and I'm all for that. I did go down to the demonstration on Sunday. There was more room between the cars than I had anticipated, but that's if the cars that are parking pull right up to the curb, and then they will have to wait for traffic to pass before, especially if they're a senior, or they have to open their car door all the way to get out. And a lot of people have to do that, they have physical limitations that they can't just shimmy in and out of a car with the car door partway open, so. And I don't like the fact that if people are uncomfortable in that section, if it's two-way, and we have the parking, that then go shuffle them around the busiest part where we want them to be. We want them to be down there. And we want, we want them to see the shops, we want them to see the activity, we don't want them to miss that. We want them to say, oh, that looks cool, hey, I'm going to go stop in that shop. That's, that's the whole purpose of it. So, depending on how this goes tonight, I would, I would vote, and this is, and this is me, I would vote yes for the added parking if we're sticking to changing to two-way, because it affords me, it affords me the luxury of putting this back on the agenda if it doesn't work. I lost that when I voted no on two-ways.
Forgive me if I've been caught by surprise, but that's okay. That's okay, that's how, that's how the system works. I'll answer, I guess, to a few of my comments as far as the two proposals, and maybe the whole project altogether, because everybody kind of, not everybody, but several people have commented that a compromise is such a horrible thing, we're only doing this because it's a compromise. This is going to be a situation, whether we did it ten years ago or whether, whether we do it now, it's just going to keep coming up and it keeps coming up. And the only way to do this, I feel, is to compromise, because you will always find people that talk to the way that Mike stated, that if they know that you're for something, they're going to talk to you about it. If they know that you're against something, they're going to talk to you about it. And so naturally, us that voted for this whole proposal to, with two-way in the first place, are going to get more of the positive reactions than the other. And I just honestly don't see an issue with compromise. It was actually a great five or six months meeting with, meeting with business owners who started with Joanna, and then it ramped up to most of them at the theater, and then, and then a few of them here just recently. So, I think that, I think it was a great, for me, it was a great process. I really liked the process. When we went down on Sunday, I was a little bit, you know, you always, on my way down there, I'm kind of walking down thinking, oh my God, I hope there's room, because if there wasn't room after all this time, well, then I would really have an issue with the decisions that I made. But I was, I was more than satisfied with the fact that there was room. The first time that, and the reason why we didn't have moving traffic, I guess, to answer to, to Ms. Cooper, is that, is that we were all offered to drive a vehicle, but when I saw Shannon from the engineering drive the vehicle past, and then she parked right next to it and, and clearly had enough room to open both doors next to the plow truck if she wanted to. Personally, I was fine with that. And if anybody else wanted moving traffic, then, then we could have, but I didn't ask for it, because I was fine with the amount of room that there was. There's always an inherent waiting for people or waiting for the right time when you're parallel parking and you're the driver and you're going to get out of the vehicle. You're, you're always going to have to wait for traffic to come. And I'll answer to the safety from my own perspective, in the fact that with the two-way traffic set up and the pattern that we saw on Sunday, that traffic that you're waiting for is going to be coming way slower than it is right now with one-way traffic, because the drivers have all the room they want, they, and I've seen people drive faster than they should be down there, and I think that this will automatically cause people to drive slower, giving you a safer feeling, I, I would expect. So, the safety, bikes, bicycles, I guess I would answer the same way. The traffic is going to be slower, so if you're on the road where you belong, you're going to be safer, in my perspective, than you are right now, because the traffic is going slower. If you're on the sidewalk and you're an adult, you pretty much don't belong there anyhow, from how I see it. I don't know, maybe at some point Joel could answer to that, or somebody with the experience under that, but, so, and pedestrian safety, it's kind of the same thing, there's crosswalks. We have crosswalks, if you're not comfortable at the light, to cross the street, and if you're crossing in the middle of the block, then you're inherently at your own risk. And again, traffic will be moving slower from this proj, from the way this project is set up. So, I'm satisfied with it, I think it's a great compromise, I think it adds parking, it adds safety for diners, it, it answers to an overwhelming amount of the issues that we got from the, from the business owners while we were there. And so, I'm still for two-way traffic, as I was right from the start, and, and that's where I stand. And we're all going to see this differently. I'm not saying this, I'm saying this just so people understand what's in my brain, I'm not saying it to try and change anyone's mind here, because I think we've way, way beyond that. We're just here to kind of state where we're coming from and how our vote's going to be. So, I guess at this point, right now, I'm in the same situation as Cindy mentioned, that we're going to take action on the item that's on our agenda, which I'm pretty sure we have to at this point. And then I would actually have to confer with Bill and Greg as far as moving forward on an agenda item to rescind a vote. I don't know that, I don't think we can do that now, because that is, that's not even on our agenda, so I'm fairly certain we can't do that now. And I don't want to say that we can't. And the reason why I didn't bring it up as one of our options is that, because now we're, once we tabled it from, from August, now we're at the point where this was the last day to make our decision on what we're going to do. Not to say we can't do anything we want, we're council, but, but we, but if we come back later, then...
I don't think anybody wants to say that.
Well, I mean, not, I guess I don't want to say that we can't, but we are at our point where we have to make a decision, because if we come back two weeks from now and we're going to have it on the agenda to rescind the vote, then, then you can. We also signed a unanimous resolution with the state of Michigan, and maybe Rich can answer to that on how that goes, but just stand by, I guess, if you want to stand by for a second, because I'm kind of getting into the rest of the topic, so. I don't know how to, that's why I said I was kind of caught by surprise, because I'm not really sure how to handle the whole thing, because of the resolution with the state and that this was the cutoff date. So, should we take and just have action on the agenda item now and then discuss that quickly, as, even though it's not an agenda item, or do you want to come back?
Well, I, I think raising the issue about whether we should make this one block of Second Street go back to one-way, I'm not sure that council should make that decision in a vacuum without considering the effect that it has on all of the downtown streets, which we've already switched over, and about the fact that there's still an ongoing study or investigation about the other side of Second and Third Avenue, and the DDA's involvement in that. And it's not an agenda item today, I mean, I don't think there was any intent that the one-way or two-way would be discussed today. And if we're, if we're going to do that, I think we need to have staff input on that issue, so that we're clear on what we're doing, before you make a decision like that on a, on an item that's on the agenda that's not for rescinding. It's, the, the item on the agenda is just for, it's already two-way, it's already voted on, do we keep the parking as it is, or do we change the parking to what's been suggested? That's the agenda item, that's, that's what you're voting on.
So, it can only be, the decision can only be rescinded if you put it back on the agenda?
Correct. And I think if you're going to do that, I mean, from my perspective, you know, what are you voting on? Are you just going to take this one block out?
Well, you can't do that.
That's what I mean, you can't, because that's not what you voted on before. You didn't vote whether there was going to be two-way on this one block of Second Avenue, you voted on this comprehensive plan, which included that. That got slowed down because there was some, some backlash, so to speak, to that. And, you know, the recommendation was to implement the change in phases, and also, at the same time, to study whether the other side of Second and Third should be changed as well. So, those were taken out of it, but the other streets were voted on as a whole. It wasn't voted on, do we make this one block two-way, this one block two-way, keep this one block one-way? So, you know, to take that one block out, I don't think you can do that, I think you'd have to undo the whole thing again. And I don't, I don't know that there's support for that.
Well, from my understanding of being able to rescind, which has to come from one of the three, the motion, you cannot rescind something that's already been done physically. So, Carter Street cannot be rescinded. You can't rescind and convert that back to one-way. You can't change that portion of Third that we redid. From my reading of the thing, those are fixed. The only thing would be Second Avenue, and I guess, again, as the mayor's, as council can do whatever you want, logically, you're not going to change one block back to one-way and leave the other block two-way. It's going to be all or none out of those two blocks that run from Otter Street, Carter, up to Chisholm. And if it has to be done as a separate, you know, at a separate meeting, the only thing we as staff went into are, the intent was to make the changes right after Labor Day, obviously, if that's up in the air, this rescinding, we certainly don't want to go through and do the work and then have it rescinded, and now we got to go back and redo it again. Then, there's going to be delay, and we're not sure when, because of events that are scheduled in the downtown, some of which are on the street, as far as when it could then be done, if it was decided to keep it as, you know, to convert to the way, because we have events that are going to begin creating problems. We have a window to get work done. So, that's just another issue, but I don't know about Rich, as far as can things be held off? You'd have to answer that.
Yeah, I mean, right now, every, everything, all our docs are lined up for September 5th. So, like, whatever that Tuesday is, the crews will be in there to do the work, is the way we've got it set up right now. We can delay that, but like Greg said, we have the beer fest, there's a wine fest, there's tour.
Yeah, you got the Discovery Tour.
Discovery Tour.
Coming in in October, early October.
So, it's, I mean, can they fit in there? Can we get the work, because it's, it's not, it's four days worth of work. We can, we can fit it in there.
Assuming weather.
Yeah, assuming the weather cooperates. So, but, I, I guess, maybe council can't answer that now, but right now, I've got all these people scheduled to be there on the 5th. If there is the potential for it to change, I want to do it.
As staff, we don't want to then go in and do anything.
I just want to let people know so that they don't, they can open up their schedule to do other work, to be doing anything.
When's the first council meeting, September?
The 5th, Tuesday, the 5th.
Oh, Labor Day.
I mean, there are, like I said, there are conceivably times in, in between there, you know, after the 5th, to do whatever. Obviously, if you change back, it's simple, you just have to cancel everything, because we're not doing anything.
We're probably fresh enough, fresh enough the parking stalls, and if we do want to make some amendments to add parking, we could do that.
I mean, yeah, if we were looking, I mean, I guess, I don't know, do we, I mean, the only way is we have to know as staff, whether at the next meeting it's going to come up, so that we can be prepared to look at it, to say, okay, if it's staying, if, as was brought up by Joanna, why can't there be more parking? I'm looking at it, and I can see why there isn't. And we could probably make some changes, it's going to mean the traffic moves differently, even on the one-way, in order to add parking, from what it is right now, at where it intersects River Park place. But we need to have some lead time to be able to then bring the information to you as council, so we, we need to know that you're going to have that on the agenda as a, that the possibility of reconsideration, that it's going to be on the agenda, because otherwise we're not going to be able to be prepared, you can bring it up, and you're going to ask these questions, they're going to say, we don't know, because we haven't, we, we aren't ready for it. So...
And how it's going to, and you'll have to answer to how it's, how, how and whether what we've, the work we've already done is going to, will be incorporated into leaving it, and apparently we could.
Yeah, I, we don't see any issues, I think that...
That was one of the things why we, why we elected, we could proceed, because independent of whatever happened on Second Avenue, it was not going to affect Carter, it was not going to affect...
It's worth its love.
So, I mean, it's, there's no backtracking on those two, if for some reason it changes.
And it, and I guess just quickly, because it crossed my mind when Greg was talking about the DDA and, and the city's agreement to have the study done, because Cindy made him, you made a comment that the other side will never be done, and that's, I guess, from my perspective, that's, I don't want to, it's incorrect. It's, if we don't have, you know, the, from my, I haven't heard that the state has released anything and that we've gone over it, and maybe that's, and it's obviously for a different meeting, but I don't know, have, if, you were privy to information that I didn't get.
Yeah, we have received the study. We've received a draft of the study. I, I distributed it out to Greg, Adam, myself, sent to M.Dot and to Ann. We reviewed it internally, we met, actually, last Friday with M.Dot. We generated, I sent them nine questions this morning, for clarification, additional information. I'm not, I'm not anywhere near ready to discuss the findings, because...
Nor do I want it.
Yeah, it, it's very preliminary, and I want to get some additional information banned from them before we present it to council. But we did, like I said, we did receive the draft about two weeks in. But we did, like I said, we did receive the draft about two weeks ago, three weeks ago, and have been reviewing it.
But it didn't say in big, bold letters, you can't or never will be able to do it. They never do.
There was no, there was no red slash through, through anything.
So here's where we are. Here we are. Well, we do have an item on the agenda. So, I mean, honestly, we all do, we all do this job the best we can, we all try to be discerning, reflective, and very decisive in any decision that we make. I mean, we, we all do our research, we all look. I haven't found anything on any of this, any of the demonstrations or anything else that would cause me to rescind my vote, so just so council's aware, I'm very comfortable in keeping the two-way portion, and I'm also comfortable with the, the new proposed parking situation. That is on the agenda, so I will not be rescinding my vote.
While you're up there, Rich, we've mentioned this casually, but I don't know how much you'd have a chance to look into, if we are going to go with the parking on both sides, do we have the ability to put a couple handicap spots in there, or not, or are you not sure yet?
Not, not without, everything that we have found indicates that the handicap stall has to be eight feet wide, which is a foot wider than what we have available for parking. So, short of moving the curbs back and the expenses associated with that, no, we cannot, we cannot put handicap stalls in there and meet the minimum requirements that we have found. Now, I'm not saying that someplace out there written that says you can do something, but everything that we have seen is at eight foot.
Is that ADA or state?
I think it's, I think it's both ADA and state.
And just so I understand correctly, there are no current handicap spaces anywhere on Second Avenue, correct?
Guess you can't just do it anyway. So we take a curb, a curb cut out to accommodate that.
Yeah, we'd have to go back in a foot.
And we've had that discussion a couple times over the course, and it usually ended up, well, where do we put it? As soon as you put it in front of someone's business, somebody else would have wanted it, and somebody else would have wanted it.
We would always be forced to put it at either one, one end or the other of the parking stalls, so that the ramps were handy for the access.
I get, I guess, well, one last thing, again, as city manager representing staff, and what we have to do, based on what you decide, obviously, you have to vote on what's on the agenda, pro or con. Whether it passes or it doesn't pass, we still have then a scenario for two-way traffic in the two blocks running from, you know, Carter down to Chisholm. That's fine, we know that, but what we're going to have to know, I guess, if it's permissible, from your perspective, is if one of the three of you who voted yes to convert the two-way are wanted on the agenda for the next meeting of a reconsideration, we need to know that ASAP, because one, we're not going to move ahead with anything right away, and two, so we can be prepared for the meeting, and what those ramifications are either way. So, that's what I'm asking on behalf of staff from the council.
With that being said, let me ask if that we have it on the agenda for the next meeting?
Yeah, I guess there is a third option, Steve was whispering there, is...
I think so.
Oh, is, I mean, you could table again, also, this particular motion, could they not? Or can you not table it twice?
Yeah, I would, I would ask council to vote up or down on what's on the agenda. Susan's made a request that it be on next, the next meeting agenda. I guess, just for clarity for staff, are you asking that what be placed on the agenda is the issue of just changing the two blocks of Second Street from two-way back to one-way? Are you asking for a reconsideration of the whole downtown changing from one-way to two-way streets?
Reconsideration of changing it back to one-way.
Of all of them?
Well, you, but, but you can't, yeah.
Well, but I mean, we didn't know what she, I mean, it's up to her to decide what she wants to be placed on the agenda, so. I mean, I don't think we should be directing her that she, what she can or can't place on there.
Just a second.
Just a second, okay.
Bill, one quick question, if I may. If I move that we rescind that portion, and we vote to rescind, but we do not approve portion B, what happens then? Or the new plan?
Well, the only, the only thing you can vote on today is whether we should go to the new proposal versus what you've already passed. That's the agenda item. If nobody makes a motion, it just stays as it is. If somebody makes a motion and it passes by majority, then that would be the new parking plan as of today. That would not be implemented until September 5th or later.
After, based on...
Correct. And then on September 5th, if council reconsider's that that section of Second Avenue should go to one-way, and that passes by a majority, then of course, there, there wouldn't be that change in parking, but if staff will have some plan to present to you, if you go back to the one-way, what are we going to do? What are we going to do for parking? Are we going to keep it like it is? Or, as, as Ms. Cooper suggested, can it be one-way with, with this configuration of parking? So that, that'll be for staff to, you know, to have those answers to those questions for you at the next meeting, when it's on the agenda.
Okay. And I'm just, I'm all, I'm surprised here too, so I'm just making...
I can hear your heart attack building over there.
I'm going to have to contact M.Dot, just make sure that they don't make modifications that like, now, if they have acquired materials, et cetera, we may be on, on the hook for those. We saw, which is...
Which I gather is why we, they, they basically forced us to, to sign the resolution. Because the resolution was, do you really want to do this? And that's where I struggle a little bit, because we're going to be, I'm, I don't know, but I'm, I'm expecting that we'll be on the hook for that. That's why they had us approve.
We haven't, we haven't got a timeline for them as yet, just not that I have heard. Jim has been chasing them.
Because that has to occur, if you go to two-way, the light has to be done before we go through and do all the restriping, because you can't have the restriping done and the, and the light not working for two-way traffic, because we're going to have a real problem. So, everything is contingent, if we go to two-way, and when M.Dat changes the light. I guess the other is, you spin the button, you do it, you have it that way. It's like the other light, we have at Second and River, set up for two-way traffic, it's just the one side is dark, and we could do the same thing, then if it ever did in the future, you know, come up again and it is decided, assuming it stays one-way, but in the future to go through, the light's already there, all they've got to do is activate it and set up the, the timing, and it's done. So, would it be money totally wasted? Maybe, maybe not, but it's no different than what we have right now at Second and River.
And the, the question came up a couple of times during the meetings that we have with business people, and again, I'm not trying to change your mind, because that's, if I had that, I'd be doing it daily with other people. But, the question came up several times, because there's a lot of fears about what will happen, what's going to happen, will people know what to do when they get to a light and they can't go straight, because the other part of Second isn't two-way, and will we be able to get out of our cars? Will cars actually go slower, will? And I don't, I mean, you used the scenario of somebody could actually get hit, I'm, I don't expect that type of thing to change my mind, but the question came up several times, what are we going to do if, let's just say this whole thing was just my idea? What are you, what are we going to do if spring comes and this was a total disaster? Then I will have been incredibly wrong, and all this is, is paint on the ground, and we will restripe everything, and the only thing we'll have into it is the cost of the light, that Greg just answered to, that...
Having him that turn off once.
That one day, they would just turn that light off, we would pay, I think, I think Rich threw a number of, whatever the number was, to just have them come in and black it again and put it back to this way. So, I would be basically the guy in the room that was wrong about this whole thing. So, so we're not talking about something that can never be undone. And a lot of the different fears that people had, they had on Third, a lot of them people had with the reverse angle parking, and nobody will ever park there. It's practically full on most days, and people figured it out. I mean, you're going to have people that don't figure it out, you're going to have people, there's people that go the wrong way on, the one-way right now on Second Avenue. There was just an accident the other day in front of the movie theater, the, the other one, the one by the fountain, a week ago, because somebody was coming down the road the wrong way. So what we have now isn't, there's no guarantee that nobody will ever get in an accident, and nobody will ever get hit by a car, because we had a woman in here just the other day that said that she got hit by a car during public comment about a month ago, the way that it is right now. So it happens, those things happen. We won't know whether this makes it worse or whether it makes it better, unless we try. So, to stop all of this, the project that we have going for fears and things that happen daily right now, or routinely right now, just doesn't really make a whole lot of logistical sense to me. But, if that's what you want to do, the only difference I would have in what Bill says is, you know, and I've done it before, where I like to take action on something, whether it fails or not. So I would appreciate the mo, I don't like to let things just set dead. So if we don't, if no one makes a motion for the current proposal, it'll just set dead, and I would rather someone at least just made the motion for proposal B, or whatever the new proposal's called, the new proposal, tonight, so that it either, that proposal of parking on both sides either passes or fails. And then if, and then we'll let the rest play out, in the event that you want to keep that on the agenda for the next meeting, we'll let that play out at the next meeting rather than this one. So let's, if, if you guys don't mind, someone make a motion.
Can I just ask one question? So if we, if somebody makes a motion and that passes, then will that be the parking plan, no matter what happens to the street?
That would be the parking plan for this, if, if, I'm just going to, if it, if it, next council meeting, you know, it's on the agenda to, to, Susan's going to rescind her motion, we will lay out a parking scenario for one-way. It may mimic this very mu, very close, but we will lay out a separate parking plan for that, because there, we had some modifications because of the two-way configuration of the parking, we can adjust to some.
But I'll, at the same time, not to complicate things, but I will also recommend that, that we do one thing at a time. If you come next meeting, we'll have two things on the agenda. Well, we'll have a couple things, obviously, but if you get, if we vote to rescind the vote, the original proposal, and that passes, I don't want it to be an immediate vote on the proposed parking that you bring. You'll have to bring that, we'll all get a look at it, the community will get a look at it, the business owners will get a look at it, and then that will come back to a later meeting, and that will be my recommendation, because we've made, we voted on proposals that were brought to us at a meeting before, and it got, and that's really not the right way to do it. So, it will be at least a couple meetings before we agree on how the new parking is going to be. If we rescind the vote, then it'll just...
That's something that can be done anytime, that can be waiting, done in the spring, you know, type of thing, if you go back to one-way.
Yeah, and then you can look at the handicap issue, because there's no handicap spots in there right now, with it being one-way, so I mean, that would be part of that.
So depending on what you have to do in the next two weeks, I don't know if that's something you want to put a lot of time into, as far as the parking situation and how it would be, or...
Whatever council directs.
We can do whatever we want.
Whatever council and Greg directs.
Well, while you direct, then I'll pass it on, that's what it's that way.
Okay, so, back to procedure. Yeah, so let's see if, let's see where we get with the new proposal at least. So, you know, I understand the process, Bill, you need, do you need a vote to rescind this portion of the, of the parking first? No, we're not rescinding it. You're not, no, you just need to propose that we approve this.
Well, it's assuming one of our members wishes to make a motion to pass this, that should be made, it should be voted on, and we'll open it.
Okay, I move we approve the proposed parking plan on Second Avenue for the two-way street conversion, as presented. Aye.
Johnson?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Noak?
Yes.
Sexton?
No.
Thank you, Sean.
Thank you.
Rich?
Hey.
All right, there's...
New business, resolution number 2017-07, resolution approving the Michigan Natural Resources Trust Fund project development, Starlight Beach Promenade and Splash Pad facilities.
You thought that would stop this, it's your worst. On April 3rd, 2016, the Uptown City Council adopted resolution 216-04, 2016-04, authorizing submission of a grant to the DNR for the development and facility improvements at Starlight Beach, including the construction of a new splash park, access pathways, lighting, shelter, and city walls, and universal access. On December 14th, 2016, the city was notified that the application was approved by the DNR, subject to appropriation of funding by the state legislator. On July 14th, 2017, the city received the attached project agreement, following the long, the long-awaited appropriation of funding, the grant term running from July 14th, 2017 to July 31st, 2019. The total project has an estimated cost of $430,000, with the, with the grant covering $205,000 of that cost. This leaves a middle, this leaves a local match of $225,000. Rotary has agreed to contribute $200,000 to the project, and the city will add $25,000. The, and if the proposed project schedule is fall, winter 2017, project designing and solicitation of bids, spring, summer of '18, project bid and award, and spring, summer of '18, project construction. City has budgeted $25,000 for their share in this, for this existing fiscal year. Rotary has committed their, have their funds raised by summer of 2018. Staff will do their best to minimize the impact of the construction on the existing park assets. At this time, the city must execute the attached development, development project agreement. If council concurs, staff requests they adopt the attached resolution, approving the agreement, and authorize the mayor to sign on the city's behalf. So basically, we're looking at accepting the grant, Dave Alver.
I have no questions.
At the first CIP meeting I sat in, 12 years ago, I saw this on the list, you know, I was all excited, I've got these little kids, this is going to be great. So, obviously, I got pushed back, but I really appreciate the Rotary stepping up and the staff, and it doesn't matter if my kids are too old to enjoy it, plenty of people will, so, I think that'd be a neat, neat addition.
How old is too old?
I'm going down there.
I'm going to go check it out, so, we'll have the council there. I move we approve resolution 2017-07. That was a really close eye. I'm going to go to Sydney.
Johnson?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Noak?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes.
Walagora?
Aye.
Thank you, Evan. Next up, new business, city goose control hunts, 2017.
The future splash park, city goose control.
Well, that's a mission key, that's a mission key, isn't it?
All right, anyway, we had the goose control hunt last year, and as Greg directed, myself and Bill Gould, Sergeant Gould from the PD, decided to do another limited goose hunt this year in the city. I'm sure everybody's noticed, there's many more geese in town this year than, than there was even last year. This was due to a better-than-average breeding season, coupled with the high water levels in the river in Lake Huron, so there was water spread into more of the estuary back in the sanctuary, allowing for more sites for nesting, the DPW wasn't able to get to when they did their egg collecting. The egg collecting in 2016, they took 122 eggs out of 21 nests. This year, they took 123 eggs from 24 nests, so there was a few more nests than last year, again, because of the favorable nesting conditions. This year, we received permission from the county to hunt the Fairgrounds property, as the geese there are causing quite a mess in the camping areas or the bike path along the river. We also plan on hunting Besser Lake and Michikvis, as we did last year, plan on holding two hunts in the early goose season this year. in the early goose season this year. The first one will be Friday, September 8th, followed by a second on Friday, September 15th. Hunts will again end at 12 noon, as they did last year, cost per ducking both hunts will be less than $800. Bike path gates again will be closed, and our barricades erected to close off the hunting areas, as well as press releases and signage that have been done or passed. Last year, we harvested 32 geese in two days hunted, and I would expect a slight increase in the number this year due to the addition of the Fairgrounds location. We will be using the same hunters as last year with the addition of about five more because of the extra spot, and one of them is a county commissioner. And four other people that I have hunted geese with will be the additional hunters. All hunters will again sign a waiver statement, as been done in the past prior to hunt beginning. Just, because I never did tell, I know what the range is of a shotgun, but I'm not so sure everybody on council knows this. The particular shot that's used, you know, first off, it has to be steel, not lead, that's a federal mandate, the lead poisoning and everything. So steel shot's lighter, it doesn't have the knock-down power that the old lead shot did, and because it's lighter, the heaviest shot you're ever going to use for geese is what they call BB. And if you take a shotgun loaded with three-inch, three-and-a-half inch shells, whatever the goose hunters use, and you at an optimum angle of 45 degrees pull the trigger, the maximum range that that shot can travel before it hits the ground is 396 yards. The maximum range, let's say where it could break your skin, is about 150 yards, or 350 feet, okay? So when you hunt geese, they have to be really close, or it just bounces off the feather. But, I mean, because there's always a concern of safety and people. I just want to make sure that, you know, I didn't say anything about that last year, but some people know the shotgun, and some don't, but that's, that's the range on that, so. With all that being said, once again, we would be asking council approval and moving ahead with this goose control hunt for this year. And anybody have any questions?
He looks at me. I have no questions. I will be gathering them up and putting them in my yard.
The geese? Get a light?
I may be in trouble with the health department if we do that.
Yeah, I'll take it.
I have no questions. I move we approve the goose hunt as presented.
I'll second. Yes.
Noak?
Yes.
Sexton?
No.
Wallagora?
Aye.
Johnson?
No.
Thank you, Dan.
I move we adjourn to close session to discuss union negotiations and water sewer litigation.
Second.
I was prepared this week.
Noah?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes.
Wallagora?
Aye.
Johnson?
Yes.
Nielsen?